Did I put my name?
Yep.
Thanks. Larry's down there. Not enough revenue projected. I'm just trying to be conservative.
There's always going to be that.
Give and take.
It's a stretch. Promise low, deliver high. Marlene and Danny Bufo and Renee Blaze are coming at seven to give a presentation on that new core program. First of the year, I guess, they made a countywide spot. Institutionally, a program.
Let's get this ball rolling.
Recovery enforcement.
We'd like to call the work session to order, please. Huh? Is that mine? One of these are mine.
They're both mine. You can use it.
Oh, here. I found one. I thought I brought one. Okay. Before we start the work session, we revised, if it's okay with the board, we revised the agenda to add from Karen Wallen for the cafeteria plan benefit. We used to use care choices, choices.
Choice strategy, yeah.
And then they're no longer providing that service, so we have to have it. I know. I know. Okay, but I just wanted to, I was going to add it, but clerk row revised, but I just wanted to ask about that. So, we're going to start the work session, and first up is Javina Neal's going to do a presentation with Angela Burgess for parks and the recreation department.
Good evening, everyone. We will start off with our budget presentation for this evening. I do have a slide that I promised from last week. This is page forty-two from our financial audit statements. In the first column, this is the general fund, and like I was telling you last meeting, where we assign funds, it's not budgeted, it's not been appropriated by the board to spend yet, that's just something we think that we might be using the funds for. So, I just wanted to make sure I put that in there so you guys could see that. Is there any questions on that? All right, so the presentations we're going to cover tonight are our park fund, our recreation fund, our fourteen B district court fund, and our golf course fund. So, first is our parks fund, very small fund. The revenue stream that we have in here, again, my presentation goes by classification, snapshot, so you can see an overview of how, what the expenditures are and the revenues are per percentage of that revenue or expenditure. So, if you have any questions, you do have your line-by-line budget with narratives that explain each one of the lines. So, at any point, please stop me and ask questions if you have any. You can see from this slide here, our biggest revenue stream that we have in the park fund is the racquetball courts. Those funds do, the service charge for those funds for the racquetball go into this park Expenditures, we have personnel services, which is really the commissioners for the park meetings. They do get paid, I believe it's fifty dollars per meeting, and there's fourteen meetings The fund balance for that park fund is very, very small. You can see, if you have any questions on this, it looks pretty, we don't have a lot of differences in our expenditures and our revenues, so it pretty much stays pretty much the same.
Any questions on the parks? Okay.
Okay, and we'll go right into the recreation fund, fund two thirty. And again, you each have your budget with the narratives and the line items. If at any point you have a question on any one of those line items, please ask. Angie and myself are here to help answer what we can for you and explain things that need to be more clearly explained. You can see from this revenue and expenditure classification summary, the biggest revenue stream that we have are contributions from our BSR two fund. That's sixty, maybe sixty-one point forty-one percent. The next is our recreation fees that we have for our sports, our dance, any camps, senior activities, building rentals. Then we have Ford Lake Park revenues. They did have a small federal grant. That's a nutrition program. If you would like, Angie, you can explain that. I think we feed the seniors. I don't know how many we feed. Do you know how many we feed roughly?
Several hundred monthly meals.
Okay. I do, I think the increase in the Ford Lake Park gate fees is due to the pickleballer, the pickleball courts, actually.
Yes, yes. We had a lot of non-residents and a lot of pickleball.
Yeah, a lot of, there was a large increase in non-residents who signed up to play pickleball and purchased a season pass. So, I think they love those pickles.
They are enjoying those courts. They are.
I'm surprised. I mean, is this a point where we can ask some questions? I don't have specific line items I want to go over. It's more just philosophical, how we move forward, Angie. When I look and I see sixty-one percent of the revenue coming in is from other sources outside of our programming, do we have plans in place to narrow that down so it's not such a big gap so that our programming is bringing in more revenue, or?
We're always looking at new programs or ways to bring more money in, any grants that we can apply for. Yeah, we do want to find other ways.
And regarding the Clark Road Fields, I briefly mentioned this yesterday, and so the other board members know, I've been approached from an individual, a group who's interested in buying that land across the street, that Clark Road complex. And if none of the board members have a problem, I was going to ask the supervisor if she could check in and see with our assessor what that property is assessed at. But before I did that, I wanted to ask you, are we utilizing that? Are people renting it enough? It doesn't look like it right now, but is that something that the recreation director would be open to even looking at?
I would think we could look at it, yes. We do still rent it. I just asked Mike that question today as well, as far as how much we're bringing in on field rentals, that kind of thing. And we do believe there's been an increase in field rentals from last year to this year. We would like to see what that might be.
And as you know, a couple of years, maybe two years ago, we had a group that wanted to long-term lease it, rent it.
Yes.
I've got another group that's come forward, and I want to sit with you after this and talk about it.
Sure.
And see if there's opportunities there to bring in revenue. Just trying to figure out, how do we, how do we increase our programming or maintain it, but increase revenue so it's not contributions from other funds to that extent?
Right.
Don't want to cut anything before anybody thinks I want to cut anything. That's not what I'm saying.
Okay. We're open to ideas.
Yeah. I just wanted to get us closer to self-sustaining all of our programs. That's all.
Right, okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
This just sort of follows Stan's question, so I'll just throw it out there. But I just want to know from you, Angie, if you think like the accessibility or like our online abilities for residents to access our programs or to like find out about them contribute to this at all? Or if like that, that particular area of communication to our residents or accessibility online was improved, if our programs might see some benefit from that?
There are some that really like the online, and then there are some of the older folks or the ones that are not technologically savvy that like to see the print material.
Okay.
They come in quite often and ask, well, when's the guide coming out again?
Oh, I have heard that too. But I guess I'll say as millennial, I hate the online. I don't think it's very user-friendly.
Okay.
I've talked with the IT people about it, but I didn't know from your perspective or if you've heard that more from residents or not.
We have, we have heard that from residents, that it's a challenge, and we've talked to our software people too about the design of it.
Yeah.
Because they get in there and sometimes they have challenges trying to locate a particular activity.
Yeah, and I know from IT, there's like lots of limitations or something with the program names, but anyways, thank you.
Thanks.
Madam Chair. Thank you. Okay, I guess my question is more around marketing. I know you do the best marketing that you can right now with the guy and pretty much online, I guess basically through the White Town website. But in regards to marketing, particularly the programs, what other ways do you believe that, the budget even, can help you market the programs more efficiently? That way, people can actually have more knowledge. I'm sure that they, you know, the ways that are being done currently, it's reaching some people, but if we could expand that, that would be great. And I guess what's, what's your ideas on that?
Well, that's the challenge we have now. We're always looking for ways to reach our market a little bit better. We had somebody who was savvy with that, marketing person, or something that can help us develop some new ideas. We've even gone back to the old ways a little bit of taking flyers to the schools, and that's been effective for some, for some areas or some of the programs. We don't do it for all of them. So, we're open to ideas of other ways that we can reach people. You know, we do a lot of word of mouth. We do, we've picked up some homeschool programs just from people that have come out to our art class, and they're like, well, what else can you offer, you know, the homeschools? So, we're starting some dance classes for some of the homeschoolers. So, sometimes it's word of mouth as well.
I was wondering, could we do like a recreation app? Like see what other communities are doing, because I know that's like, people who are real interested in one subject have an app for that. Something that might work.
That may be something we can look into.
Folks are doing it, and that way, people who have that app, they're interested in township recreation, anything that's on there, they would automatically get. Everybody's using their phone, very few people use a regular computer, at least.
Yeah, we found something similar to that helps with our dance program too. We have them all linked to something they can click on and get email reminders of when things are due. Yeah.
I was just wondering, maybe somewhere, time we could get like an update. I have no idea. I know that during the election, I got a couple complaints from residents saying that we don't offer, it was basketball for a certain age group, and wanted to know why we don't do that. And I said, I have no idea what we even offer in terms of youth sports and stuff. They said that because we were limited, they moved from, even though they like our program, they moved to the Lincoln program.
The only age we don't reach are the teens, because we started basketball at about four or five.
Yeah, and I think that's what, I think this guy has, I think that's, yeah, that's what he was saying.
We found that they would go to the AAU teams at about that age.
Yeah, and what he, that's exactly what he was saying, because he said, that's the only other choice, and he thought that there could be a competitive teen program because AAU is so expensive, and it really, a lot of people get eliminated at that point. And another thing I noticed too, and I was talking to the folks when I was at Calvary Baptist, is that, you know, they don't have a school there now, and with the exception of Wednesday nights, that big beautiful gym they have is not used at all. And it's a regulation high school, you know, gymnasium, basketball court.
Okay.
I didn't know if that was an area that perhaps, so maybe we could get an update just to know like, what is it that we offer, and when is it offering?
Sure.
On the, on the youth sports, it's tough to see. But that was one of the things, he said that he had specifically talked to our staff person who wasn't really interested in pursuing it, and he said he was even willing to volunteer, because he actually coaches his girls in basketball, and that's what, it was basketball.
Okay, I'll look into that.
And it was, and they are teens or middle schoolers.
Yeah, we can definitely entertain that. I know our basketball starts and goes January through March, and we use our gym every night once basketball season starts.
Yeah, and I just thought, I saw that huge facility there, and I know that church is pretty good to work with, I know at least for elections, and maybe set up a meeting with them to talk about would they be willing to let us use it.
Yeah, if you have a contact person out, I could start there.
Because I mean, it's beautiful. I mean, floor is gorgeous, and like I said, it's a regulation high school athletic association.
Okay.
They played like division, or Class C, I think, when the school was there. It's sitting there empty, and he told me the only nights they use it, it's Wednesday nights for wannas.
Okay.
Sometimes on Sunday nights. Thanks, Angie.
Any other comments or questions?
We can go.
I did, if I could, just, so adult sports was actually up. And looking in the revenue, so even though we didn't have the brochure and the online wasn't good, it does look like for some reason the recreational, so whatever you did to market to that group, I don't, I don't know.
I believe with the adult sports, a lot of those were returning, people that have been with us before.
Well, you increased your revenue by six thousand dollars, so you did something
More teams, yeah, we got to keep doing that.
Different. I'm sorry?
Is that, was it pickleball?
No.
No.
No, that's, pickleball pays it, plays it. Well, they do, they used to play pickleball inside, but I don't know.
They're still inside, but that, they weren't a fee, yeah.
They were inside last year, too.
Yes.
So, there's some.
What was the revenue that you were talking about earlier?
Gate fees.
Gate fees.
Gotcha.
Was increased about ten thousand, which was a correlation to the pickleball. And then I also see though that the youth sports went down.
Mm-hmm. The youth sports went down, and preschool soccer, that's where we usually have a majority of our revenue with the youth sports is the soccer, and those are the new people. Those are the ones that don't know about our program yet, that we would bring in through the rec guide, whereas the other youth sports that have been with us with soccer, they continually return, but we're missing that. Preschool was down at least fifty, fifty to fifty kids or something like that over the last time we offered preschool soccer. Those are the new people, so we need to find a way to reach them, that they don't know that we're online or what have you yet. So, we're working on grabbing those.
Well, you talked about doing a direct mailing.
Yes, and our clerk right now is working on kind of an in-house rec guide right now that we'll put out for January. We'll at least have it there in the libraries where people can have something in their hand as well.
The other thing that I, the dance, so has everyone paid for the dance, for the dance recital that's coming up?
Everybody's paid for dance for this year, then the second half is in January, they'll pay again.
So, your dance is?
Is down a little.
Substantially. So, I don't, I don't know why.
Yeah, we were trying to look at that and figure out why with dance. I know we, we had about fifty kids or so less than last year, but we did something a little different with the classes, too. We combined them and made them combo classes, and maybe that's something that parents didn't want a double class. We were trying to offer a little bit of variety with the classes, and maybe that was something that didn't work, so we got to revisit that.
Mm-hmm. The building rental was up a little bit, but I know that was probably due to the increase with the Washau Community College lease agreement, right?
Yeah, some of that was in there as well, yes.
Well, large, yeah.
Yeah.
How much was that?
Fourteen thousand.
That's what I thought, yeah. So, previous years without that, we were at forty-nine thousand. So, there's something, you need, something's off. I don't know what, you would know more, you know, than, the Ford Lake gate fees, like I said, it's up about eight thousand.
Mm-hmm, yes.
That was good. And then the reason, in two thousand and fifteen, you were getting five hundred and twenty thousand from BSR two, which is a bike path sidewalk recreation millage that's, and you're at five oh seven now. So, you did go down from fifteen, but you're up slightly from last year, and it's because you have a forty thousand, some improvement in here, building. Fifteen thousand to cover the community center maintenance contract that, for the, it's probably for the boiler and.
It's the new thing that's out, gen and night, yeah.
Yeah, so if it had not been for that, you would actually stand, be taking less than they did last year.
Last year.
But the key is to get the revenue up.
So, we can ask for less.
Right.
I was just wondering, is there any way to like look at all the registrations from all, I'm sorry. From the adult and youth, and just see, you know, kind of plot them, kind of like we do the sheriff's department, plot them on a map to see, you know, where are folks coming from?
Data.
Got a sense of, I know over the years of talking to folks that people on the south side, especially in the newer subdivision, you know, the people aren't from here, that's just moved here, that aren't even aware that we have a golf course. The same thing would be interesting for the golf course, just to do, to see where township resident addresses, to plot them out and to see where they're actually coming from. That could help you target perhaps with your marketing. And I know I'm just thinking with the dance folks, if that's down, maybe just to do a survey, like, we're doing a survey to see what you want us to offer next time, you know, and then so that you could, you know, meet the needs of the clientele that you currently have. But I think if we could just pull out from all the addresses, I don't know, I'm suspecting it's on the computer, right? So, be like an Excel spread that you could.
We'd have to think about how we can pull that out. We have a resident versus non-resident, but to plot the individual addresses, it won't sort it like that for us, but we can take a look at it and see. Okay.
Could help with your targeting for your marketing.
Yes.
You know everybody's coming from Willow area or from Holmes Road area, but you're not getting anybody from Golf Village or anyone, then you could.
Right, okay.
Is the YMCA still operating free class? See, that's another thing that happened.
Camps and basketball and all of that, they offered a significantly lower price.
With the school, Hispanic community schools.
Right at their schools, yes.
Because you had gone to them last year about.
Trying to collaborate on some things, and nothing materialized with that.
Because their rates are much less than our rates.
Yes.
So, that's another challenge. Sometimes you've got to change, like pickle, you know.
Do something different.
That was something that no one knew would take off like that, but it did.
Right. And we also started charging for our senior dance classes as well. We started that in the fall to generate a little more revenue in that area. And we did lose a few people, but, you know, the ones that felt the value of it are still with us. We didn't gain any new people yet for the dance classes, but there's a small fee that they pay for that.
Madam Chair.
Just a couple more questions.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I want to ask a question in regards to, and I know this is, you know, futuristic thinking, but in regards to the facility itself, right? And is it, I guess you could say, I know there's been improvements and continuous improvements, but do you believe that if it could be expanded? So, in other words, when I look at expansion, I look not too far away, like, you know, rural run high school, which I know it has a program in there, but I can't believe that program is using the entire high school. If it could be expanded, would that be something that possibly in the future, again, it's this futuristic thinking, could bring in maybe more revenue for the township? That's my first question.
Yes, if we can expand, we would, we would definitely be, like to expand, whatever we can do, especially like gym space. I just started collaborating with a guy that's doing a fitness class for us, and now I've got to try to find a space for him because basketball is getting ready to start. So, there are some programs that we can initiate or expand on if we had the space.
And then the second question I had is like video marketing, right? And the reason why I ask this question is because I know I have heard maybe, you know, some residents, I guess you say across Ford Lake, that either A, don't know that it's there, that our facility is on Clark Road, or B, you know, may need to have another visual way in order to reach them and catch their eye. What are your thoughts maybe on video marketing and showing off some of the programs that are successful at the rec center? And, you know, having that marketed out through the township website and maybe some other areas?
I think that's something that would be a good idea. I approached someone at Lincoln last year, I believe, but they weren't able to take that on. I was looking at maybe if some high school students could help us produce a video, go to some of our basketball games or our senior programs, and pull together a short video that we can run on our website. I think that would be great.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, Angie, I've got a number of different questions, even on some of the revenues that you're putting out. Just youth sport. We've got sixty-five thousand this year, next year, and we've got two months to go, so I'll just make the assumption that we've got ten months in, so about sixty-five hundred a month if, if it holds true. So, that would give you about seventy-six thousand dollars. You have eighty thousand budgeted for next year. So, is that realistic? You're going, it looks like you, the best you'll do is about sixty-five thousand or seventy-five thousand this year, and so you're going to make five thousand more. Just a question. Gate fees, fifty-two thousand, we budgeted forty-five, so we're over, but is there a reason that we're not going to be able to hold that for next year? We've only budgeted forty-five for next year, so whatever we've done this year, will we be able to hold that and look for another, at least fifty thousand in gate fees?
We may be able to look at more, yes, in gate fees now that we have the pickleball, and we've seen that, you know, people do come out for that, because when we did the budget before, that pickleball wasn't in effect yet.
Just, yeah, a few things. And then do we look at, you know, even when we look at gate fees, if I go back into expenditures, and is Ford Lake, Ford Lake, temporary Ford Lake, is that, is that the people we use for the gates, for all the gates, or?
Yes, and we saved a little in that area. Robin really helped us and was meticulous, like on rain days, the staff didn't need to stay out there, so that was helpful. I know minimum wage is going up, so we may end up spending a little more next year, is my understanding.
Yeah, so had we not cut on those expenditures, we would have just fairly well broke even between revenues. So, you almost sometimes wonder, well, maybe we're better not to even charge at gates and not have the, you know, it's just things to look at. Even when we look at the sports and the amount we're generating in the, in the sports arena, how many people do we have tied to that? Is that just one person? Is it two or three person? Are we spending a hundred thousand to generate seventy thousand? Just things that maybe you can look at and, but I know that you have come down on your total wages quite a bit, so.
Yes, Mike was doing a good job with that as well. There were some, we had a few less teams in some of the youth areas, so he used less umpires, and we were able to save a little bit in that eight-one-eight line item due to that.
Thank you, Angie.
So, would, do you want to adjust?
No, I'm just, I just, I just threw those out. It may be something you may want to adjust, and maybe we could reduce a little bit of what we're putting into it, but, but you may have some adjustments that are too high and need, so, so you may bring a few up, and you may bring a few down and be right exactly where you're at, but probably more likely to maintain those next year.
Okay. Any other question?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yes, I just had a question about the community center in general as far as, do you foresee any upgrades that we'll need coming down the pipeline that, maybe the flooring or paint or anything that you foresee that you may be requesting next year?
Yes, painting for sure. We had some bids in the work. We'll need to go back and see if those amounts, we had a couple bids, but we still need to look at a couple more and see if those prices are still what they're willing to offer us. That's for painting areas of the community center. We'd need flooring, the gym floor and dance studio floor sometime in the near future need to be resurfaced, as well as tile floors in the hallway. need to be resurfaced, as well as tile floors in the hallway.
Okay.
We did, what did you improve this year?
This year, we did the ceiling. We got the ceiling tiles and that was awesome. It looks good throughout the community center. They did a nice job with that.
I think they did the roof, too.
The roof, so we have, we are making improvements. Thank you.
Do you know which, what might be the next, out of that list of items, what might be the next one that you probably want to tackle?
I would see painting happening first.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a question. I had a question, this isn't really budget, but I had someone wanting to know if they're doing the Christmas program this year for kids? For Santa and stuff?
No. It didn't, didn't work out last year. We didn't have many people attend. They changed the, they offered something different instead of that. This time we offered a frozen program.
That this weekend?
Yes.
This Saturday?
Okay, do we have any other questions on any of the expenditures?
I do think, though, we need to increase the revenue and talk to your staff in ways to do that and get more people to participate. Because you do have dollars budgeted for community promotion.
Yes.
And you had them last year and you really didn't utilize them. I know that IT did budget to up, upgrade your rec wear, is it?
The rec track, yes.
Rec track, okay, rec track.
We did training and we did get that upgrade for rec track as well.
Yeah, so those are, you're getting there, right?
Getting there.
So we need to keep working hard to try to increase the participation.
Okay.
Anything we can do to help?
Maybe even interns. I know Eastern sends that thing over all the time wanting to know. They have those intern fairs. I always send it out. Departments that might want to, like I could see an intern for the video stuff or for the recreation.
Senior.
Seniors, you're like, there's a lot of interests and degrees in that area.
Okay, then we go on to our fund balance sheet. So you can see how we've finished up 2016. We did have a net positive revenue expenditures. They still did need money from the BSR2 fund. But you can see the ending fund balance at 40,960 is pretty solid straight across through into 18, is what we're projecting. Is there any questions on the fund balance for the recreation or any other questions for recreation?
I know you gave us indication what fund balance should be in other areas, so what would be?
Yes, this should be 15 to 20 as well.
Okay. Thank you.
So that concludes our recreation fund. If there are no further questions, we'll go to our 14B District Court. And I believe Magistrate Mark Nelson is here. Thank you, Angie.
Thanks, Angie. Hi, Mark.
Hello.
All right, so we'll start off with our revenues. And again, we do have in front of you, you're presented with the line by line budget with the narratives for each one. My presentation has just the classification summaries, just to give you a snapshot of where the revenues lie and the expenditures lie as far as to compare to what the revenue is total and the expenditure total is as well. In this case, you have your highest revenue is your state reimbursements to the judge, jurors, fines and fees. So this is all the forfeitures, fines and fees that come in. We've kind of lumped them all together in this classification. You can see that it is 87.14% of the total revenues that are expected and budgeted. We do have a state grant. And then I believe, Mark, is that the Michigan?
The Indigent Defense Council?
Yes, is that one?
So that's new, that's new legislation that's required for us to make changes as to how we provide indigent defense council. And they're paying the difference from what it would cost us to, to meet the standards that this legislature set.
We can't hear you, you have to kind of get it closer, there you go, Mark.
Thank you. So the legislation requires the state to pay the difference of what it would cost us to provide the indigent defense council services as required by the standards that have been set. We're, have submitted a plan in partnership with the Washington County Public Defender's Office, 14A, in the, in the county circuit court. That plan does nothing until the legislature gives us the money to do it. So we submit our plan, the plan gets approved, and then the legislature has 60 days to provide funding for it. So until the legislature actually provides the funding, we don't have any requirement to follow, to begin doing these things. So there's, we're two or three steps away from it actually happening. And the big, the big one, of course, will be the legislature providing the funding, which hasn't been budgeted or anything as far as legislation is concerned.
So do you, should we not budget for it?
Oh, no, no, we need to budget for it.
Why? What'd you budget for if you don't know if you're going to get the revenue for it? That's my.
Well, I mean, we need to plan, I mean, the legislature, the legislation requires the legislature to fund it. So it's, it's there, the statute's there, the, the standards are there, everything's there. All I'm saying is that we're not required to do anything until they actually send us the funds for it. So we, we won't, we won't have any out of pocket expenditures until it's funded. So, you know, we don't have to worry about the, actually spending any of our money until we get money from the state. So, yeah, we do need to budget for it, does need to be part of our plan. I'm just giving it the, how it plays out as far as the legislation is concerned and the requirements for the legislature to fund it before we're required to actually do it.
Are we talking about the 115,000?
Uh huh.
Is that what you're talking about, Mark?
Yes, yeah.
So, and that's for providing attorneys to those who can't afford it?
Correct.
So, so is that just a technicality that you're talking, is that just a technicality that you're talking about?
That's how the.
They get representation, right?
Yeah, we have to change the way we're doing that. The legislation, legislation was passed in two, a number of years ago now. And they've set out standards, making requirements that right now, you know, our public defender meets with their client here in court and they proceed there. I mean, there's requirements that they meet outside of the court, they meet, they'd be available at arraignment. There's a number of different standards that are required now. They're going to cost more money to deliver those services. So the state's providing the funding to deliver those services, the difference between what we pay now and what it will, what it's projected to cost to provide those services. The state is required by the legislation to fund that difference.
Is the 115,000 the new revenue?
That'd be the difference, it would have to be funded by the state, yeah.
It's potential. They haven't approved the legislation yet.
Well, the legislation's there, they haven't approved the funding, yes.
Yeah.
So they're required to. If they, if they didn't.
They've been required to do a lot of things, but Madam Chair.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, so, so we're looking at 115 additional, plus we pay for the, the attorney that we have, defense attorney we have now is $55,000. So you're looking at 170,000 to, to fill the requirements that the state is asking for?
Correct.
So is that one person or is that a number of people?
Well, it's going to have to be more than one person. I mean, the county public defender is going to provide us persons or people or persons, depending on the day and depending on what happened at the court. And we're looking at some different ways of doing that, obviously, you know. Judge Pope's courtroom, when they're having, when they're handling all their dockets, somebody's have to be there all the time. When there's at arraignment, there are new requirements require there to be a public defender available at arraignment as well. So the judge and I do our dockets at the same time. So at those times, there'd have to be two people here in the building.
Do, do we have any idea how many cases we have in a year that, that defense attorney is? And I know that the defense attorney that we have now doesn't show up at all the places that I think he's supposed to, is my understanding, I don't know if that's true.
Well, it'd be impossible for one person to meet the standards. Yeah, so I mean, that's why we're, you know, with the public defender's office, we'll have the people available to us to do that.
Well, it depends on how many cases you have. I mean, you might have three cases today all and have to be in three different areas at one time, I guess, I don't know.
Our, our, our courts virtually, I mean, I can't tell you, I mean, it's a very high percentage of the, our defendants are provided public, public defense services.
Very high percentage?
Very high percentage, yeah.
Well, what would that number be?
I can tell you exactly what it is, I can run a report for that.
Ballpark.
I mean, it's got to be, you know, yeah, 80, 85% of the people. I mean, very few people have their own attorneys coming through our courts. Our, our, our population's such that the most of them qualify for public defense services.
But I'm, 85% of what? I mean, is it, is that 100 a week? Is it 10 a week? Is it three a week? Is it? That's, that's what I'm trying to get to.
And I think just for a point of information, the township hires the defense attorneys. So whatever happens, it has to come back to this township board, right?
Correct.
That's, and I know that Larry and Magistrate Nelson has been talking about it, but we've never had a chance to really meet on it. So the law is also being challenged by Oakland County and Macomb County, right?
Just Oakland County now.
Just Oakland?
Yeah. Macomb's, their, their case got dismissed, but it's the same, same.
Yeah, but their case got dismissed because of some procedural type things. I'm sure they're going to get back in, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which I do believe in providing better public defenders. I, I think you should get that. And people should be represented very well in prosecution and defense especially. My only concern is, so the law passed in 2013?
Probably, yeah, sounds right. I mean, it's been five, four or five years since they passed the law, yeah. So it's been, it's been very slow moving forward on the legislative.
So that's just a, so the actual law, that was just a recommendation from the state commission, is it?
No, the legislature passed the law, then they, then they required a number of steps to take place. The, the first step that had to take place is that they had to develop these standards, which they've developed now, but it took them from the time of the passage of the legislation to now to develop those standards. So once they developed the standards, and they've only developed the first set of them, there's three sets, I think, coming out, then that, that triggers requirements for the courts and the municipalities to then step up and do our end of things, which is prepare for the need for these additional public defense services that are required by the standards.
So if we have, we have to change this, are you seeing in January?
Well, no, we've, we've submitted our plan, okay? So now there's, I believe that they have 60 days to approve our plan or send it back for additional changes if they want us to change anything in our plan. Once that happens, then if the final plan's approved, then it's another 90 days after that that has to be funded. And once it's funded, then we have 90 days to proceed to get everything geared up and get moving forward. So we're, you know, a number of steps still away from actually hitting the road.
So that's 150 days is?
Middle of next year.
Right. So we're budgeting?
Budgeting for, or is this only budgeting for half of next year then?
No, no, this, this is for the full year.
The 175.
Yeah.
From 55.
170.
Hoping we get 115 from the legislators.
Correct.
Well, if we only do half a year, you'd only do half of the 170, right?
Potentially. Potentially, I mean, I mean, yeah, I mean, it just depends on.
Plus you'd have to, you'd have to, if you continue the way you were going, you'd have half of your 55, so you'd have 2750 would be your first half of the same way we're doing it then.
Yeah, I mean, we may need to come back and make an adjustment depending on when the actual start date is, certainly. But, yeah, we need, we just planned out to be having it in place for the year.
Yeah, so the, the numbers are high. So I support doing it. I, I don't know if it's better to go with Washington, and I, you and I've had these conversations. Washington County Public Defenders are a private firm, but in order to get up and running, this is the best avenue for the court and for the resident, or not residents.
Well, I mean, our defendants are our residents, yes, so a number of them live in our community, so.
Well, the people who can get public defendant, they, they don't have to live here.
No, but a number of them do. So, but anyway.
Yeah.
Yes, so to answer your question, yeah, 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 that's, that's the route we're on. Not even the, even the time constraints and the, and the plan we put together, that's, that's where we are.
So what happens January 1st? Are we?
Until the legislature approves our plan, and that, that triggers the next set of dates for us to get started. So, you know, once, once they approve our plan and approve and give us funding, then we have to start making steps forward at that point in time.
So, so we should only really be budgeting for half the next, next year?
Well, I think we ought to budget it for the full right now and then come back.
Well, but you're inflating, you're inflating revenue that we're not going to get.
Well, expenditures, so they go hand in hand.
Yeah, I mean, whatever, whatever shakes out being, I mean, we'll get, the, the state will give us the number we're going to get for the year, and we can come back and, you know, because I'm going to have to amend that line item, too. So if we need to amend, we'll amend both the revenue and the expenditure line item simultaneously.
Madam Chair. I just want to clarify. So this, the plan that you guys have already submitted is for the entire year? Like, do you put your finances in the plan that you submit to the state?
It's an annual plan, yeah.
So, so that's where you got this number and this number is within, contained within that plan that you submitted to the state?
Correct.
Okay. So if we, if we were to discuss changing it, that would require you guys to change your plan that you submitted?
Well, I mean, the, you know, presumably, I mean, the state's going to, you know, they're going to give us money to fund it for the time left in the year, presumably. I mean, as, as Larry's pointed out, I mean, they may, may come back prorated, so I mean.
Okay.
Yeah, but I, you know.
Sounds like they thought that out really well? I said, it sounds like our state legislator thought that out really well?
Right, right. Madam?
I just had a question of where, I see the 115,000 on that, but when I look in here, I don't, where is it at on the, in this?
The line item?
Yeah. 115,000, on the revenue side.
The last, the last six numbers are 688.200.
Yeah.
It's like the third.
Well, that has nothing.
The third revenue from up.
Yeah, it shows 115,000.
Oh, okay.
Third from the bottom up.
Thank you.
And then the corresponding expenditure that he's speaking, that we've been talking about is, I don't have a page number, but it's in the expenditures and the last six numbers on that are 801007. Attorney fees, criminal.
Page 38.
Yeah, I don't have it.
In the budget. My concern is that if we know we need to do this, Mark, and there's not adequate defense right now, like, should we, how do we get better defense in the meantime while we're waiting for the 115,000? Because you said one person can't do it.
Well, they can't meet the standards, and we're not required to meet standards. Yeah, I mean, yes, and there, you know, we could, you know, it's a choice to be made. I mean, we can wait, wait until we actually, you know, have to meet the standards and start meeting standards, or we could get out ahead of it. Problem is, is we wouldn't be, you know, reimbursed for the funding, any money we spend prior to that point, you know, prior to us getting the funding.
So if we make any changes, then we won't get reimbursed?
For that portion of it, I mean, you know, prior to the requirement, prior to being required to do it, yeah. I mean, if we started spending more money today, that wouldn't be subject to reimbursement until we hit the date for the required, requirement to meet those standards.
Even though you already submitted the plan?
Correct, because we're not required to start providing services until it's funded. So we certainly could make that choice and start providing additional services now, but we wouldn't, it wouldn't be subject to reimbursement until, you know, that, if we cover the period between now and the time that the plan's approved and the legislature funds us, that would be something we would be paying out of, you know, out of pocket, so to speak.
So do you have any indication on any of approval of the funding?
Well, I mean, it's, I mean, legislation requires it to happen.
No, I know. Where's it at in the legislative process, do you know?
Well, the, the plans have been submitted, they're required to be submitted on the 18th of this month. So now they're all being reviewed, and they have that, the period of time to review them. They, they're going to approve our plan or they're submitting back to us for additional changes. So that's, that's the unknown in, in the, in the timing of the whole thing is if they kick it back to us to make changes, then we resubmit it, and then that starts our clocks all over again.
Okay.
And can we get a copy of those plans?
I emailed it to you.
You did email it to me?
Yeah.
I must have missed it then.
Okay.
Email it to me again, please.
Certainly be happy to.
But anything that happens has to come back to the board. The township board hires the public defenders and the prosecutors.
Yeah.
The judges are supposed to.
Yeah, there'll be a separate contract for that, yes.
Yeah, that's supposed to.
I'm sorry, it's just a, it's just a point of information. I'm just trying to make sure I understand the program itself. Okay, so basically, do the defendants, are they able to? Um, okay, so basically, do the defendants, um, are they able to request a different counsel than the, um, I guess you say, the, um, the regular?
Public defender?
Public defender, if they so wish? Is that how this works? I, I guess I'm a little confused.
Sure. So, I mean, the public defender is assigned, the only time that there's a change, we, we do appoint other attorneys to represent, but that's only if there's an existing conflict of interest. So if the public defender is already, is representing or has represented in the past, a co-defendant, for example, or something like that, where they can't represent both parties, that's the only time we'd provide the alternate counsel for them. You know, the, the only other option they have at that point is to hire their own attorney.
Okay, all right, but otherwise than that, it's the standard public defender that usually represents, I guess, say, the majority of the eighty percent of population that qualify for public defendant services, is usually that particular person?
Everybody that qualifies is appointed, yeah, is appointed through, Mark Hamilton's who we've contracted through with that for years.
Okay, got you. And then what I hear that you're saying is, is that, um, basically, he has a large caseload, obviously, with the eighty percent? And with that, it may be a need to bring on additional public defender in, in order to meet the standards of this, this act?
The standards require more appearances, the public defender, right now, we don't arraign anybody with a public defender present. The standards require that somebody be a president, a public defender be a president arraignment, so, and those are happening simultaneously in two courtrooms at one time. So, I mean, that's the, that's the big difference. But, yeah, there's, there's a handful of other differences. There's meaning, there's requirements to meet with your client within, you know, so many days of being appointed, uh, requirements, uh, to, you know, go to the jail if your client's at the jail, and things like that, that, uh, you know, may not be done, being done as diligently right now as they are. That, that, that's a cross-state problem too.
Of course, okay. Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. That explains this a little better, thanks.
Certainly.
Madam Chair, the MCL number, if you wanna look it up, Monica Rita, is seven eight zero point nine nine three, or MIDC Act Ninety-three of two thousand thirteen. It just talks about the times. Yeah, sorry, uh, seven eight zero point nine nine three.
It's in the...
Dot nine nine three.
Okay, okay.
I just googled it.
Cora?
So currently, um, the fourteen, you, you hire the public defender currently?
Mark Hamilton's been here for a long time. I, I, I just, I mean, well, well precedes me.
In the beginning.
Yeah, I mean, so...
All right, and currently, that, that's underfunded currently?
Well, he's, I mean, he, he can't personally meet the standards as his one person. So, I mean, you know, we, we could pay him more, but he still couldn't do it himself.
So he can't meet the standard?
So, and the standard is what you're worried about?
It's what we're required for to do, yeah.
No, but I mean, other than that, when, in terms of providing enough for public defense, you think that we do enough without that, or is you just trying to meet the standard?
Oh, no, no, I mean, there's, there's, we certainly could be doing more now.
And, because we fund the prosecution side, right?
Yes.
And we fund the defense side?
Correct.
We fund everything.
All of it, but, and they're, they're not comparable?
Well, I mean, they're providing different, they're providing, they're providing different services. I mean, it's, it's not an apples...
It's an hourly rate.
No, I know, I'm just...
It's an hourly rate, right? Is that what you do, or do you do a yearly?
Well, the pub, our, Mark Hamilton is paid annually. He has, he has an annual contract.
Like a salary, like? He has a salary or hourly?
Well, he's paid every two weeks. I mean, he's an independent, independent contractor.
It's a yearly amount, broken down to twenty-eight pays or twenty-six pays?
Yeah.
Have you been in any discussions with the county board of commissioners or the shares about the millage that was just, I guess that's not being, that money's not coming until next year, though? It's not till eighteen. I was just thinking how that was gonna impact our court in terms of mental health and advocates representing folks who, you know, have those kind of needs.
Nobody's come to us to indicate there's any direct impact to us.
Maybe you need to contact things. I know they're, they're in discussions about how they're gonna spend those dollars, and I think at least the way it was promoted was a lot would be through the court systems of diverting folks and having representation for folks who have, um, mental health issues.
I mean, there, there's a mental health court in Ann Arbor. I mean, I don't know if they're gonna, you know, make that more...
It's a countywide millage. Our residents are gonna be paid, like, over a million dollars in taxes, so we kinda probably wanna make sure that we get in those discussions. I don't know, because I've heard that they are having meetings about making sure the monies are spent properly and where they're gonna be going, and, but no one's atta, approached our court system that you're...
No, I mean, I, I, you know, I mean, that, you know, I assume they'd be providing services that may lower the impacts on our courts if, I mean, if we're handling mental health problems, because a number of our defendants have mental health issues. I mean, that, that may be an indirect impact to us, but nothing's come to us directly on that.
Because I could see this as a place to help with the defense, mental health. Folks could, they need a representative to actually argue that mental health issues for them, so they could get into whatever diversion programs.
True.
Like, I can't see the current defender, that's not his area of expertise, I would think. I don't know.
Probably not.
Yeah.
We do a lot of the drug court, though, through grants, so we've addressed a lot of the issues that are in the millage, kind of, for, um, drugs and prostitution are two grants. I know that you...
Yeah, there's, there's one grant dealing with both those issues, yeah.
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 So they're trying to deal with it then?
Madam Chair, uh, Mark, I, I think the only other question I have on the revenues, most of them look pretty good, except for you have really two of them that, um, we've really generated in seventeen. We've generated more than you budgeted in eighteen. Um, line item, six oh three one three six. Uh, we'd budgeted two hundred thousand in seventeen. We're at one eighty-eight through the end of October, so we're gonna, we're most, we're gonna exceed the two hundred thousand, and we've only budgeted one ninety-three for next year. Is there a reason for that, or?
Is this revenue?
That's, that's, those are civil filing fees. Our trends for civil filings are, are, continue to go down. Um, last year, for civil cases, we had, uh, four thousand nine hundred and sixty cases filed. Uh, to date, we've had four thousand six hundred and thirty-nine, so we're gonna, at best, match that, if not, go down some. So that's, that's civil filing fees, and our, our civil caseload has, has dropped. Um, a big, big portion of that is landlord tenant cases have been going, continue to go down. Uh, we're having fewer and fewer evictions in the township, up, you know, way down from where we were when, uh, the housing crisis struck, and we were, you know, dealing with, you know, five thousand evictions a year. Now we're down to, you know, twenty-eight hundred, three thousand a year. So civil is, the, the, the filing fees that are coming in from civil are decreasing, and we project that to continue to decrease.
And then the other line item is six oh five oh oh one, fines and cost.
Mary, before you move to that second one, may I ask you a question about the one, the civil fees? Sixty-five percent of that goes to the state in, in your narrative? Team B civil, you said approximately sixty-five percent is taken by the state of Michigan? I'm on this.
Which line item is it?
Um, six oh three one three six, in revenue.
Page nineteen?
Yeah, it is. Yeah, that's, I mean, that, that involves, uh, the, the state takes civil filing fees. Uh, there's an electronic filing fee that's support. Uh, e-filing, it's still supposed to be coming from the state to pay that. Uh, they take, uh, a portion of filing fees go to a, a number of other state programs. They're all required by statute, so that's...
Yeah, I, so when I read that, is the amount budgeted, which is actual revenue, or is that what, so there's expenditure to transfer out to the state? I mean, because if sixty-five percent of that money is actually gonna be sent to the state of Michigan, I'm just looking...
Is that the thirty-five percent of the total?
That is correct.
Okay.
But don't you have to budget all the money that you take in, and all the money that goes out?
He did. He budgeted, or they...
No, when, in their system that they have, the court has a system that it automatically splits that out. So the revenue that you see here, the monies will come into the account, but then they'll turn right around and go back out to the account. It's, it's already separated in their program, the amount that'll have to go to the state.
So you're saying that we're under accounting principles, or we're not required to show those dollars going in and out? Is it more like a taxing authority, like we do, like for schools?
It does, it does go in and out, but the amount that you see here is the net, because the in and out goes right through that...
So the thirty-five percent is the amount that's budgeted?
That is correct.
So where do I find the other amount that comes in? Like, like on grants, you have to show it even though it's coming in and out? You don't have to show that in the budget, that's my question?
No.
And is that like a state law, or, because that's like, where does that come that you don't, the money's coming through our court, but we don't have to show it?
Probably like taxes, right, Karen?
That's what I just asked.
We collect all the money for taxes, but yet we send out...
They actually have to send in a monthly report, so, so they follow all the rules that need to be done. They show the report, the money's coming in, the amount that's supposed to be sent to the state, the amount that's supposed to come to us. It's, it's a, it's a monthly report that has to be sent in.
But it doesn't get audited? Is that an accounting thing anywhere?
Not, not into ours.
So is, does the courts have their own accounting audit?
Absolutely.
It's done separately from?
Yeah, we're, we're audited periodically.
So you have that done separately? It's not a part of this budget?
We did, we had an audit, uh, two years ago, I believe was the last audit we had. We were...
And in there, it shows all those state funds coming in and going out, or fines and fees going to the state?
Yeah, they're, they're all available. We, 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 we report them to Jivana. I mean, she sees all of her checking accounts, all the monies we write in and out. They all go back up through to, to Jivana.
It's also in your monthly report that you give to us?
Yeah.
It, it shows what goes to the state of Michigan, the library, I think, county...
Yeah, the, the three places money goes is Washoe County for the library fund, the state of Michigan, and then to the township.
Thank you.
So my other, my other question would be then on six oh five oh oh one. Um, we are showing seven hundred thousand for eighteen. We've already generated seven twenty-six. And so if we maintain that average for the next two months, we'd be looking at, in, in excess of eight fifty. Eight, probably about eight seventy.
Yeah.
For this year, and we're going down to seven hundred. Is there a reason that we don't, uh...
Again, when I prepared the budget, those numbers were down for that, those types of citations. Uh, we're looking at, um, let me find them here on the sheet.
Well, they can't be down, because in sixteen, we generated three twenty-six.
Well, the, the, the number of cases we get aren't, aren't, aren't directly correlated to the amount of money we collect. We're collecting money on cases going back, you know, I mean, I've, I've, we're, we're getting payments on things going back ten years still. I mean, people don't pay their fines immediately. We catch up to them eventually and keep on paying on them, so I mean...
So all the cases are closed now?
No, no, we're, we're collecting, we're still collecting on back cases, but our, our future cases are decreasing, so I mean, we're not, we're not adding more to them at the same pace we had been. So that's another area where, where our filings have been coming down, so that's why I went with a little lower number there.
Treasure Doe, I do have to say, too, that when these are prepared, these are numbers that are put in in July. Um, we do try to update them, but to update every single line item would take a lot of time, so we did our best estimate, I think, is what he was trying to say. At that point, it looked like it was gonna stay, not go up as high as it, it did.
Madam Chair, I just wanna make sure...
I'm just, or just for a point of information, we do the draft budget in July, and then as we get towards adopting it, we always have updated numbers, and that's what everyone's seeing, is that you've had an increase more than we expected to have. So we can change revenue if that's, you know, what the...
Certainly, if, 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 if things warranted, we certainly can.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, I just, just a clarification. I wanna make sure that I'm understanding the line item with the explanation, because if the number's right, it's six zero five zero zero one, that's what you...
Yes.
And it says in the narrative, um, you know, it's continued to trend upwards, and as a result, this line item has been increased. So I think that was, is that your question about why it was lower? Because if that was your question, then it also doesn't match the narrative.
He increased it from five hundred and sixty thousand to seven hundred thousand, but, um, as of October thirty-first, there was seven hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars
Yeah.
in the revenue.
Yeah, so, right.
Oh, I see, okay, I understand. But it still has increased from six, or five sixty to seven hundred? Okay.
Yeah, and...
Yeah, so, right, we're looking at, yeah, the, the seven, whatever is twenty-six is today versus what we were looking at back then.
So we just lump all that?
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Madam?
Um, and, and the line item, I think, also helps explain that in comparison to what you were talking about. This is, in addition, the court has made a number of changes to improve correct, uh, collections over the past three years. You had said the number of, I guess you could say, ordinance, um, fines are going down, but the revenue is coming up, because based on you're generating revenue from, I'm assuming that from what you said, fines that were due maybe years before? Okay, so the collections, um, I guess the ways that the court has improved the collections are being able to allow you to generate those funds back into the account, correct? All right, thank you.
And you started that two years ago?
Uh, I mean...
Sixteen?
Yeah, I mean, we've been, we've been working on it, you know, I mean, since, you know, twelve, a little bit incrementally, but certainly in the last couple of years, we've been, you know, been stepping on the gas a little more.
I was gonna say, we proved that, wasn't that this year, we proved that new way that people can pay?
There's a number of...
Or was that last year?
We've, we've done a number of things with, with payments. Um, you're, I think you're talking about the, the online, the, the online mediation.
I thought that would help a lot, because...
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's certainly...
Let me pay it online, I'm done with it, whereas I put it in a drawer and forget about it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and that's, you know, one of the, we're always looking for opportunities to improve the customer interface, uh, you know, get, make things easier for people to, to especially pay, but to interact with the court in all ways.
And this is also due to increase in traffic? Is, are these traffic ticket?
That particular line item, ordinance would not be traffic, no, that's, that's more of, uh, the, the ordinance enforcement. So that's, um, you're looking at, uh, you know, the blight and lawn, things like that, I believe.
Because it doesn't really say.
Yeah, and the sheriff's department does, does enforce ordinance as, as well, so...
So where's traffic civil, is that...
They're under court costs. Traffic, I mean, traffic tickets get broken up into a number of different places.
Right.
Costs, uh, fines and fees.
Revenue, yeah, the revenue. I'm looking for the revenue for traffic.
Traffic, that's...
Is that in which? So, does...
Yeah, so I emailed, emailed you out this afternoon, your request on that, so the, um, ordinance fines, yeah, that's, a lot of that is, I apologize, that is, part of that is traffic, part of that, they're combined. I thought, I thought they were separated out, but they are combined.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Court costs have went way up too, revenues, so what is that?
Court costs are part of a fine, so I mean, when you, a misdemeanor charge, uh, people are, they're...
Five hundred and sixty, or a hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, so any, any misdemeanor charge carries on, uh, fines and costs. The, the court costs are part of that.
So it's projected to be a hundred thousand over last year increase in revenue, court costs?
Yeah, and, and part of that is, uh, you know, we're, we're looking to pick up on additional collections, uh, if the position we're looking to have added on is, is, is approved as well.
Other question? So on the expenditure side, some of the, it's proposed to add another position?
Correct.
So, um, I think I made a mistake and didn't budget for the healthcare, because is that a full-time? Because I never had this conversation, so I didn't, it's, is it full-time, is it, um...
It, we, yeah, we're proposing a full-time position. Uh, might ask Jivana to include the, uh, the costs when I gave the budget back. I'm not sure if that happened or not.
No, I, I actually, I did omit putting full-time healthcare on there. We did put the dental and the life insurance, sorry, but I just totally missed adding it. And when we do this as a new position, we always do budget for a family, so I need to actually change the healthcare line item, seven one nine zero zero zero. I have to add twenty thousand onto that for healthcare, for a family. Now, if they come in and they're, they're single, then we, you know, of course, we'll adjust that, but we always budget for the family. That's the highest one. So I apologize. I do have to make that, you'll see that correction when it comes back in December, on December fifth.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So then if we add, uh, let's just... So then if we add, let's just sing, a single, that's six thousand, eight thousand dollars.
Correct.
So if all the numbers stay the same, then we have a negative seven thousand dollars balance expenditures versus revenue.
We're going to adjust the revenue as you suggested for the.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, well, I've got, I've got my arrow to adjust that as well, so I'll adjust it at least twenty thousand.
So that position has to come back and be created and been, and given a, come back to the board to be created and.
Yes.
It'll have all that in there, I was just trying to understand, would that also help? Because you have salary temporary seasonal, and you have one person who fills in for a court recorder?
Yeah, that's been in place for the last two years, and I mean, Judge Pope, that's been from Judge Pope's courtroom, and that will continue. You know, she's here one day a week, so we've put her in that line item because it is, you know, just the one day a week type of temporary.
But do you, we use, why do you, why does that, the judge need that and you don't? I don't understa-
Well, the judge is on the bench a lot more than I am, I mean, so he needs, you know, Jackie McLean on Mondays helps get things prepared for the rest of the week for his dockets and things like that. I mean, every other judge in the county has two full-time staff people, I mean, we do it with one plus one day a week, I mean, so.
We have two, right?
The judge, he has Jackie McLean, and then he has.
No, but we have two court recorder?
Yeah, the other one's mine.
So she can't help?
Well, she's doing all the financial stuff right now.
But that person's gonna take that, over that responsibility, so.
Correct, correct.
You see what I'm saying, will that free up?
Oh, the person to fill in for Jackie and for your court person, is all you're asking?
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to see how it sort of shakes out, I mean, the judge right now would like to keep that the way it is right now, I mean, Jackie McLean is planning to retire, so I mean, that's gonna be another conversation we'll have when that actually happens in the early part of the year, as to how we fill back that position. So at the time, yeah, we're budgeting for that to stay the same, until we know exactly what Jackie McLean's plans are.
Well, and when is that person gonna retire? Because that's another thing we have not budgeted, is a payout for that, it's about fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, she hasn't indicated exactly when she's going to, but she's indicated she's planning to this coming year, but I don't, she hasn't done anything officially, so I mean, I don't, I didn't think we could bring anything.
We need to have just, like I, you know, because you notified me of it, so I started looking into the payout, and so we would have to look.
But that's, I'm just trying to give you the background, I'm thinking as to why we left all those positions where they are right now, because I think we're gonna look, we have an adjustment at that point, you know.
The new position's supposed to be self-sustaining, so you have the revenue in, it covers the expenditures for the healthcare and the employee, and that's, at least that's the way I understood the situation.
Yeah, I mean, we're looking for that too, I mean, it should self-sustain, I mean, we obviously won't know until it actually gets going, but I mean, every other court that's ever done this has self-sustained that position, I think the opportunity is there for it to absolutely do that.
But I do think this position will relieve your.
Certainly.
Administrator, if she's doing all the day-to-day.
Yeah, I mean, that's part of, that's part of what we need to do, is we're, we have a number of people wearing multiple hats, taking care, taking on lots and lots of different activities, so this is gonna take some of the pressure off of that, but their main job still is gonna be meeting with people and setting up payment plans and working on getting, you know, revenue coming back into the court, so there'll be a number of places where there'll be some minor relief given to people that have doubled up duties.
She's gonna help with your books though, right?
Oh, yeah.
Or he, this position.
Whoever, yes.
Will be helping with the books.
The daily accounting exactly will be part of that.
And that's currently being done by?
By my recorder, who does that in the brief period of time she has in the morning before we go on the bench, yeah. So.
I'm not sure if you need to budget for the ten thousand dollars for that person to do that, if you're gonna hire a whole new person to do that, that's all.
Well, that, once we get to that point, that's something we certainly look at.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I had a point of information question, and maybe it's just the way I'm reading it, in some regards to the expenditures, eight oh, what's this, eight oh one, zero, one zero? It has says in the explanation that the per diem cost of a visiting judge is three hundred and fifty dollars plus mileage, is that per day? Because that was the question I had, you know, when I saw it, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
I didn't know if it was per hour.
No, no, that pretty is, it's a daily rate, yeah, plus mileage.
Okay, thank you.
And on the judge's salary, which is really reimbursed by the state of Michigan, correct?
Yes, yeah.
So you budgeted higher, the note said it was the same as last year, and it's actually five thousand dollars higher?
I apologize, yeah, the judge's got a raise, so they, I apologize, the notes didn't indicate that it was the same, but they.
I can't, I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Mark.
I'm sorry, yes, I apologize, the note said they remained the same, that should have been indicated a slight increase, the judge's salaries did increase for the past year.
So you have to change the narrative?
Yeah.
So the state paid them more?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
It's got the wrong number in the thing, gotcha.
Well, the wrong, the number's right, the narrative's wrong, yes.
That's what I meant.
Yeah.
So this year, we budgeted for fifty thousand, and there was no increase, or is there an increase, because we're only at thirty-four thousand as of October thirty-first?
Jody, I've got it.
We budgeted forty-five thousand, seven twenty-four for seventeen, and for eighteen is what I think he's talking, referring to is fifty thousand, three hundred. So I think that is the increase for the judge then?
Yeah.
Well, I'm just looking at the revenue is from the state, is that what pays for it? I think it is. Paid directly by, to the township, because there's no out-of-pocket, so for revenue, in seventeen, we budgeted for fifty thousand, but we only have thirty-four thousand, I was wondering, did he get, was that increase last year or this year, or next year, I mean?
Those numbers should have matched from each year, I'm not sure if that was, I'm not sure if the spreadsheet picked up that incorrectly, or, but it's, next year is when the increase would have begun.
So you don't know if it's fifty thousand this year?
No, I know, it's fifty thousand for eighteen, seventeen.
So now, they probably didn't get it last year?
Correct.
And seven, this year, seventeen?
Correct.
Okay, I was just. Any other questions? And I know also, Mark, you talked about redoing that room, one of the rooms in order to accommodate a public defender?
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't see that in this, or is that just if you get the revenue?
Again, yeah, well, that's revenue dependent, if the money's approved to do that, then we would come back and address that separately, we're after bringing that whole package back anyways, so.
Okay, okay.
That's part of the state reimbursement, the hundred and fifteen thousand?
Public, no, that would be a separate amount of money that would still, would come back.
But you submitted that to the state already, or?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And we didn't budget for it, because we don't know.
Right, we don't, I mean, that's, that, you know, that portion of it, you know, who knows if he actually gave us money, I mean, yeah, so we'll bring it, we'll bring it all back at the same time, yeah.
Okay.
Do you have a question that, because the state is on the October budget, what is the, so I didn't understand why that hasn't been funded yet?
I'm sorry?
The state is not on an annual budget, they're on the October to whatever, so I didn't understand why, my question is, why isn't that already in their budget?
Oh, the, I don't know, I mean, the legislature hasn't, you know.
I mean, they've already approved their budget.
Okay.
I would.
Yeah.
Wouldn't they for October, yeah, because their fiscal year, yeah.
So, yeah, we haven't heard anything.
So maybe they've, so much in the judge, whoever's in charge of that side of it hasn't decided?
I mean, they wouldn't, they wouldn't know what the plans were being submitted, they have no idea what the, each court is submitting a plan, or each funding unit is submitting a plan, so I mean, they, you know, I mean, they could put something out hypothetically is what they'd assume it'd be, but until they get the plans submitted, they're not gonna know, but I honestly don't know what the legislature's doing on that.
And the same is for grants, that's the same odd.
Right.
Because of the, we won't, we won't get full payment until January, February for the previous grants that were in seventeen, right?
Yeah, I mean, it throws everything off, because we're working on an annual budget, fiscal year, and then we get money in the following year, you know, two months later to put it back to that, yeah, so it skews that whole thing.
Yeah.
We're calendar here.
Yeah, that's the thing, that's, for the grants, were you able to get that straightened out? Giovanna, I know you had asked for clarity on the grants, because there's another grant on the, for a budget amendment.
I can address that.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, Giovanna had asked me on that, and so what we haven't seen, I, it was, the state says they sent the money out on November sixteenth, fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars, and that would come to you, I don't know if that's coming yet or not, to be deposited, so that brings that number up quite a bit, and then in addition to that, we have another six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars that has been expended since October first, which will be in that February reimbursement, so the number's, like I said, is excused because of that, because, you know, we have it showing in our annual, but it's actually, part of it is reimbursed, which is the incoming fifty-nine thousand and some change, plus the sixty-seven fifty that we've spent that we'll get later.
So we'll get fifty-nine thousand more?
That should, that should be coming in, I mean, the check literally should be in the mail.
Right, okay. I was gonna say, they don't mail it, do they?
They wire that in, I will.
Who does?
I will check, I will check that tomorrow, it should, it should be there, it should be sitting in our, in our bank, they wire it to us.
Okay, so that'll help balance that out?
Yeah.
Per, okay. Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
They do have their last page, the fund balance though, so if you'd like to just take a quick look at that, just an overview again of the fund balance, and you can see where they, they end up, in two thousand and eighteen, we've got the ending fund balance, if everything stays as is budgeted, they'll have a two hundred fifty-nine thousand, one hundred twenty-two thousand dollars, and that gives them a thirteen point six percent, I'm sorry, thirteen point sixty percent. So it's not quite fifteen, but again, all the funds that are in this separate court fund belongs to the general fund, so all the amounts that you see can be transferred back over to the general fund.
And we just separate it out from general fund so we can see how it.
So we can track.
Yeah, the same is true for recreation golf courses, compost, I think.
Okay, any questions?
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Golf courses. And we do have the golf course next, and we do have Kirk Sherwood and Tim Smith here tonight to help answer any questions if need be. We do have our revenue by classification summary, my snapshot, you do have your budget line by line and your narratives, so if you have any questions, go right ahead and ask, we have the golf course revenues at sixty, forty-six point ninety-four percent of the revenues, total revenues, and that includes all, all fees that belong in the golf course, so that would be the eighteen holes, the nine holes, the leagues, the season passes, any other memberships, that is the total revenue. You can see the second line item is the contributions, those are received from the general fund and the BSR two fund, I'm sorry, and the numbers that I have up there, I didn't mean to mumble, the numbers that I have up there are for the two thousand and seventeen.
There's only one question on, on the revenue for the nine holes, that, so seventy thousand was budgeted, and we're only at thirty-seven, and you budgeted eighty, so that, this kind of jumps out at you?
Yeah, actually, after I looked at that, because it does stick out, obviously, it actually should be closer to fifty-five to fifty thousand, it was originally budgeted for seventy thousand for two thousand and seventeen, which I was looking at the budget for this year, first time I've looked at the budget, obviously, was this year, so I don't understand why it was budgeted for seventy thousand, I looked at the number thinking, you know, if you can increase nine-hole rounds, we can go up ten thousand, however, if you look at a snapshot in the last three to four years, there's only one year that even cleared fifty thousand, so I'm not sure why it was budgeted for seventy thousand, but it should have went the other way, and I will tell you, that is a mistake and needs to be corrected.
So adjust that number to what?
I would say fifty.
Okay, all right. That one just jumped out.
Agreed, that's.
Okay, so we will adjust that number, that also is going to have.
Stand, I think. You have a question?
I was just gonna follow suit, Monica had the same question. The season's over now, correct?
Yes.
So last year for league play, you were budgeted at thirty thousand, you're asking thirty-four, or projecting thirty-four for the coming year, but we're only at nineteen-eight, and the season's over, so I wouldn't expect any additional revenue coming in to support nineteen-eight?
That's correct, that's, that's the number it's at, but I will tell you that we lost three to four leagues this year, there are leagues that we had last year I had no contact for, I have no idea who they were, I do know I have one that's coming back next year that left this year, so, you know, and I also plan on putting leagues for the golf course itself into place next year that are house-run leagues.
So you think you can increase the leagues?
Absolutely, I think that that number is closer to thirty-four thousand next year.
Madam Chair?
Okay, I'm sorry, just, because as I look back, as you did, with the nine hole, I only saw one year that went above thirty thousand.
For leagues and?
Correct, so I'm just wondering.
Sixteen was thirty-five.
Right, that's the one I saw, that's the only one I saw.
Well, the one before was seventy-six thousand.
I thought, I'm sorry, I saw twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, thirty-five.
Twenty-seven, two, 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 for two thousand.
Oh, you're the leagues.
I'm looking at leagues, I'm sorry, maybe I misspoke.
No, 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 that's me.
His question was why?
I guess I'm just wondering how we get, right, if we, if we ended this year at nineteen, and you're gonna bring in a couple of leagues, I guess, are you saying, will those leagues generate, those, you generate that fifteen thousand dollar difference?
I would, I would estimate three, estimate three to four thousand per league if you bring in a new league, I mean, so.
So you're guessing five new leagues somewhere in that neighborhood then?
I would say three to four.
Three to four, okay.
Well, yeah, so it's still too high, right?
Well, if it's four thousand, four sixteen would be thirty-five thousand.
Okay.
Stan, are you?
I'm good.
Okay, I'm sorry, Heather?
My, I'm just gonna continue down, like, my same question is about the gift cards and coupons, not that like, I mean, that's a, within a hundred dollars, hundreds of dollars of difference, but, I mean, do you really suspect that you're gonna increase that by that much? And then additionally, if you go down two more lines to the equipment rentals and carts, that's like a thirty thousand dollar difference from where we are today.
Right, and I still think that if we can get the play next year, and we put the, put the right things in place, we can get to that number, it won't be easy to get to that number, but I do think that is possible, you know, maybe one fifty's a little bit too high, you could say one forty-five maybe, but I do think that if we had all the play in May that we should have had due to cart path construction, that number could have been a lot higher.
I'm just looking, you know, because back in two thousand and seventeen, it was one forty, and then prior to that in two thousand and fifteen, which is really the last time we did really well at the golf course, it was still only one thirty-nine, and I don't like pretend to know what business was like in two thousand and fifteen at the golf course, but the, all the numbers, that, that was our, our best income year, and we still weren't, you know, ten thousand dollars away from that.
Supervisor, I think it's just a philosophical difference, I think, I'm not sure about the new trustees, but I think overall, those of us who better, we're used to like, lowball on your revenues and highball on your expenditures, so we're not shocked at the end of the year with a hundred, you know, so, I mean, I know that that's what you want, but I think that's what folks are saying.
I mean, I'm happy, I'm happy to adjust it down if, if that's what you feel needs to be done.
I just, you know.
We can, we can adjust it down, and hopefully we go over the top of it, I'll be happy to do that.
I just think it's better for you and for us and everybody, not come on with a fifty thousand dollar debt.
We'll take that, we'll take that down to one thirty.
Yeah, and especially the nine-hole fee one that we were discussing, was that, yeah, that's the one that was eighty thousand, I mean, I just like wouldn't, this is my personal how I handle finances, I wouldn't anticipate getting thirty thousand dollars more than I had this year. more than I had this year, than I had all the last years and I wouldn't but balance my personal funds that way, but.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I don't wanna get ahead of the, the game, but just those two, it looks like you've talked about being open to the idea of decreasing projected revenues by fifty thousand.
Correct.
Obviously, as Joe knows, that's gonna take you to the other side of the ledger and where are you gonna cut fifty thousand out then, will be the question I'll get to eventually. Mine's just philosophical for Kurt and Tim, as, as you were in the room, I spoke to Angie, at, at some point, we have to self-sustain, and as I look back just at the numbers on this sheet, over the last four years, we're averaging a contribution from the general fund of just over a hundred and eighty-five thousand and it's a difficult business you're in, I, I know that, a lot of people in this room know that, we just have to figure out how do we get back closer to zero than we've been. So, I don't know, if you've thought about, I take fifty off the front side, I've got that next side of the ledger where I gotta take fifty off.
Gotta take fifty off, absolutely.
How mu, how much was the improvements, Giovanna?
I do have the improvements for two thousand and seventeen on page, let me just flip that for you.
Four hundred?
Four hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight fifty-six is the total that we had in capital assets and major repair, um, and then equipment maintenance, and I've listed those out, again, this is for two thousand and seventeen, so that is the number that you're seeing, um, we did have funds from BSR two and the general fund contributing to the golf course and I think that is the major reason i, is because of the.
Was it capital?
Capital assets, the improvements and the purchase of the, um, couple of new, the ground master.
Mower equipment, yeah.
Yeah, mower. And, um, if you can see, I was on page nineteen, I did mark on the, um, contributions from other funds and, and the description, I have, that's the seventeen number, so we did get, um, four hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven so far, um, for two thousand and seventeen, we did get two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, sixty-one from the general fund and one thousand, eight, eight, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven ninety-six from the BSR two fund.
You should like highlighted that, that that was seventeen, cause when I was looking at.
I should, I, I do apologize, yes.
I think, whoa.
Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions, if it's okay.
Um, yes, first things first, um, just some noticing, uh, it looks as if, at least on cards, um, and I'm looking from two thousand and sixteen, I know obviously two thousand and fifteen activity, you're looking at a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven, um, but two thousand and sixteen, it was down significantly, um, one oh eight, um, one twenty-nine and looked like it's beginning to slowly go back up, uh, one nineteen, uh, eight oh six in activity from two thousand and seventeen and, uh, equipment rentals and carts. So, here's my question, I guess with that, um, with the improvements that have been made to the golf, uh, course, and, um, again, I think it's been highlighted from that general fund of two sixty-seven, six, uh, oh six one and a BSR two fund of one eighty-eight, uh, seven ninety-six, that was pretty much given for those improvements, um, have you seen, um, an increase in regards to revenues, cause your carts went up from, I mean, definitely the carts have went up, um, from two thousand and sixteen, that's for sure, so I guess, can you explain that a little bit?
Well, yeah, I've, I've seen improvements, um, I mean, just based on outing comments, I had comments from outings this year that the golf course hasn't looked as good as it did this year in the thirty years they've been there, um, to me, that's, that's a big compliment, um, I know Leon did a great job with it and to have any type of compliment that comes my way after Leon's been there, obviously, I'm, I'm very thrilled by that. Um, we've got a great membership, there were a number of members this year, obviously, that have been there for a long time, um, they are very supportive of the golf course, um, the improvements though, though are there, um, it's, it's very obvious from the first time I stepped foot on the golf course and rode around it, now with the path, path being fixed and spaces and them putting the new material down, the golf course looks really good right now, um, all the greens are healthy, um, it was my priority this year to make sure that the greens stayed as good as we could keep them, um, obviously with what happened in two thousand and fourteen, we wanna avoid, or two thousand and thirteen, I might be off a year, but we wanna avoid whatever happened to the greens when I wasn't here, so I wanna make sure that everybody is aware that the greens are about as healthy as they've ever been.
Yeah, one more thing I wanted to make sure I highlight, um, is your social media marketing, I constantly see, um, information in regards to the golf course and different types of specials, uh, that are available for the golf course and I, I just wanted to highlight that because I definitely see a step up in the social media marketing.
Sure, and, and of course, we, I use them in places that were dead spots, we had some dead spots on Sunday mornings and I put an early bird special in place and put Leon's name on it, cause I thought that was appropriate, um, I also looked at Tuesdays and Thursdays and for whatever reason, Tuesdays and Thursdays were kinda quiet, so I put a twenty dollar rate for seniors in effect on Tuesdays and Thursdays and dropped the other rate to twenty-five. Um, what I am noticing though, is that I look back through records, that was the same problem in two thousand and fifteen, it was just at a lower rate and the same thing was done, um, so, in order to increase rounds on those days, it was done, but it was about fifteen dollars opposed to twenty. Um, all of the discount stuff that was in place has been removed with the exception of Groupon, Groupon, basically, I put back in play in mid-July, raised the rate on it a little bit, um, we did about five hundred rounds less than last year, which was about a fifteen thousand dollar difference, um, but again, we were able to sell quite a few up until that point, but as far as any other discounts in place, um, I wanna move the golf course away from the idea that it's a discount golf course, that's what the mindset is, it's a discount golf course, um, the golf course is in great shape, there's no reason we should be associated as a discount golf course, but that is, that is the mindset, I believe, that people have with the golf course and I also think that a lot of people don't know where the golf course is, um, I think the marketing with the golf course, we are limited with how we market the golf course, obviously, I've used the website, I've used the electronic billboard, um, but I've also started a Facebook page, it's been slow, nothing's really been going on with the Facebook page, I've posted a few things, um, gotta get word out, I started a birthday club to try to get people to sign up and get emails, um, which is all controlled through Golf Now, so, those are some of the different marketing tactics we've got in place, moving forward, um, I had talked briefly to Angie, actually, about it to consider doing some kind of billboard out front that's an electronic board, I know it'd be a lot of money, but, you know, it would advertise the golf course as well as the community center, so, just some thoughts as to how we could market the golf course a little bit better.
Um, actually, um, I don't know if, uh, is something that you thought about, but one thing that's always helpful to grow a Facebook page is targeted Facebook marketing for people that are golf enthusiasts and basically certain ageses, and, um, it, it does give results, I, I know that for myself, um, and then the next question, I, I think I had this question also for Angie, is, um, have you thought about video marketing the golf course? And when, you know, you can put that also on social media, it can be, you know, tagged various ways in order to generate eyes, um, to, you know, let people know, like you said, you're trying to take it up to not a discount golf course, but into, uh, you know, I guess a, um, a premier, uh, level golf course, so what are your thoughts on that?
Well, we, we also, as a target market though, I've gotta get kids involved, kids are the future of the game, um, if that comes down to it, something maybe on a Sunday where we do after four o'clock, they play with a parent for free with a paid greens fee, something to get kids out to the golf course and get kids interested in the golf course, um, but the marketing aspect, any, I'm open to anything at this point, going to the golf show in Novi is definitely going to be something that'll happen in March to make sure that we get some word out on the golf course and we, we sell maybe some packages for eighty to a hundred dollars for foursomes or something of that nature, but just to try to grow some revenue and not drop the rate in order to make that happen.
Question, have you thought about, um, also partnering with the schools, I don't know if any of the schools actually have a golf program, do they, I'm talking about Lincoln and, and YCS or do they, I don't know.
And I was kinda surprised, I mean, I know with our league schedule, but I was kinda surprised, maybe we hadn't entertained the thought of hosting for a school, um, to have a school play at the facility, I don't know if that's something that's been done in the past, I can tell you, I.
That's a great idea.
I spent, I spent eight hours at Holmes Elementary and went up and did an intercession for Holmes Elementary to help them out and kinda get the kids introduced to golf that were in classes there, so, um, you know, and I'm open to possibilities in the area, obviously, there's things I had to learn about the golf course this year, it was a learning experience, I, I completely expected coming in that there'd be things that I had to figure out and there was, so, you know, but, but definitely to get kids involved and, and target that market and figure out what we can do there and then also work with the community center, we, we tried to put something in place to where I worked with the kids at the community center, um, unfortunately, one kid signed up, but it was a kid that I had taught over at Holmes Elementary in that intercession, so I worked with the kid one-on-one and it was, it was nice, cause he got a lot of experience and got to spend a lot of one-on-one time with him, so it was good.
Stan?
I have a couple of questions, I know, last year, we discussed that when you came forth with the budget this year, you would also have accompanying it the prices for the forthcoming year, we talked about that.
It's on the agenda.
It's on, it's on tonight's agenda.
I just didn't see it in the packet here.
It's on the agenda. It's in the board agenda.
Okay. I didn't look that far ahead, I just opened, I didn't see in the packet.
No.
Is there a price increase?
Um, based on where we are in the market, there's not much room to increase the price, so, the majority of the rates are the same, there are a couple that I've highlighted in yellow when we get to that part of the board meeting and.
Memberships, up or down, cost-wise, and are we seeing an increase or a decrease in membership?
Um, I don't know the exact number from last year, so I can't tell you whether it was an increase or not, um, but I did increase the, the resident membership, but not the non-resident membership when we get to that part of the board meeting.
Is, is the number of members something you can supply later for us?
I have a packet that I'll hand you that has all that information.
Isn't that, I'm sorry, it's in your revenue though, right? Membership?
It's, it's part of the, it's part of the, the revenue line, yes, so.
Is that your question, Stan?
Um, yeah, I guess I could, could answer that for you.
I was just looking at cart storage, not that that's a big deal, but that, that's what rang my bell, is cart storage went up, but I know we're not taking new carts, so, that's what prompted me to ask, is there an increase in all those different things?
Right, the, the one that, the one that I had, I had a total of eight and there were seven in the barn and one offsite, so, I don't know if maybe that one sat there and wasn't part of the year before, um, but I can tell you, I have eight total.
Okay, um, if I can, just one, I can't let Tim get off the hook with no question.
Stan, do you want the rates as part of this budget?
No, no, I'll look, that's my call, I didn't look ahead.
No, no, okay, I just didn't know.
Um, Tim, I'm just looking at major repairs to mowers, is that something above and beyond what your assistant's capable of doing or supposed to be doing?
Instead of buying, uh, brand-new equipment, remember, we had talked about that, uh, last year, we, instead of buying brand-new equipment, we refurbished a lot of the mower stuff, so, it should be in pretty good shape this year, we'll send it, you know, we'll send back.
I'm sorry, that way she can hear you.
We'll send in some of the equipment this year and then, uh, keep doing that until we need, really need to buy some new equipment.
And equipment maintenance, I'm looking at two different lines, a total of about sixty-two thousand.
Yep.
The one was the major repair to mowers, that's what has to be sent out for special work?
It was, um, there was twenty thousand, uh, there was one more mower that was given to us from the parks department, and that was like twenty-some thousand.
And then just general equipment maintenance, is that contractual, we have contractually done, or, I'm just trying to figure out why, why are we sending out maintenance, I know Larry asked this several years ago when I was over there.
Yep.
Uh, why we weren't doing it in-house and I know at one point, we sent it here.
We do everything in-house, I remember when you were out there.
Yeah.
A few years ago, Bob does all he can with what he has.
Okay.
So, above that, we send it all out.
Okay.
And with them, we, we had, um, a new turbine pump this year also, that was about eleven, twelve thousand dollars, so.
What, what line item are you?
I'm just looking at, uh, the major appropriations overview.
Yeah.
We sent out about sixty-two thousand for maintenance and I didn't know if that was, why Bob wasn't handling that, the assistant, cause I thought that was his primary function, was maintenance.
Well, he, he fixes all that he can, but this is getting down inside the engine, tearing it all apart and, and doing a little bit more than that.
So, it's more specialized?
Yeah, yeah.
Is this because we, this year, instead of purchasing new?
Yes.
We shipped, um, equipment out to be repaired, it was like a hundred thousand, Larry, do you remember that? It was anyways, it was much more cost-effective.
It was cheaper than buying new equipment.
It was like.
It was what?
It was cheaper than buying new equipment.
Right, and so you sent it out to get repaired and I think that's the, I, Stan, I think that's the increase that you.
Yeah, thank you, just one last question and I'll stop. Kurt, you were budgeted for an assistant last year, never hired that position, I know the money was moved around to cover seasonal.
Right.
Is the intent to hire that person this year, and if so, because you'll have another full-time person there, that decreased the need for as much in seasonal?
Well, I'm, I've actually contemplated what that's going to do, um, in the budget though, I did budget for that position, I think six thousand in overtime, um, uh, based on maybe three hundred and ten hours of, of basically overtime in peak season for the assistant, um, I ended up picking up a lot of the hours myself and ran with a staff of four in the golf shop and four outside, um, including myself in the golf shop, so, total of eight people on complete staff plus two Rangers, I believe, um, but I am planning on putting that position out and I'm hoping to post it in December and have the person hired hopefully by beginning of February, mid-February, and leave it out for three to four weeks and then do interviews in January.
Thank you.
So, the minder, the temporary pro shop, you spent fifty-two thousand, but you're proposing to do thirty thousand, so, that should make up for the difference between the full-time person, like in the budget.
Well, minimum, minimum wage is going up as well, I don't know if that'll play into it, but that, that's another concern I have.
Oh, yeah.
But, I mean, I, I think compared to last year, right now, I'm roughly fourteen thousand less than where they were last year, so, on, on the shop staff budget.
And we have to pay overtime for the two assistants because that new law that was passed or?
Um, I think it's still up in the air, I'm not sure whether it's actually passed or if it's still in limbo.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, I know we're gonna get to expenditures, but I, is it okay to ask a question about that now?
Sure.
So, I'm just looking at, um, I have looked at the explanations, but I'm actually looking at just the line by lines and it's the top three.
Revenue or expenditure?
Yeah, it's, uh, the last are seven zero two, zero zero one, seven zero two, zero zero two, seven zero six, zero zero zero, and just the differences between activity in two thousand and eighteen, or activity in two thousand and seventeen compared to what has been requested in the budget, and I know the line item said, you know, there's no changes to this and all those salaries will come back to the board, but those alone, if you added those three and then subtracted where our activity has been for two thousand and seventeen, um, it's like a pretty significant difference, like almost forty thousand dollars, so, I'm just thinking about how we talk, discuss changing some of your revenue monies, like maybe the, I don't, if you could offer more explanation, I guess, on why we're keeping those the same?
I mean, on, on the golf shop side, because I'm still planning on the assistant, I mean, I, I was able to drop it by fourteen thousand by not having an assistant this year and working a whole lot, but, um, the other part that you're looking at, I'm guessing is, you said seven oh seven, zero zero one, which is the maintenance side?
The green, yeah, the greenskeeper.
I guess that would be a question more for Tim, because that's, that's his side of.
We wanted to hire more people this year. Oh, we wanted, we wanted to hire more people this year, but, uh, there were no people to hire and, uh, Bob and I ended up doing a lot more work, um, and then didn't have to spend the funds, I guess, in that category.
Do you think that there will be more people to hire this year, two thousand and eighteen?
You have to increase.
Hope so.
Hope is a good thing.
Good.
Hope is a good.
I appreciate that.
I think you're also increasing the wages, is that what I heard for seasonal?
Yeah, we have like five people that show up on time and, and, uh, they're pretty, they're pretty, um, good employees, so we have to pay those guys, so we actually have employees.
All right, one of the only other questions I think I had, I was just looking at the, like, if there's any way to like tighten up those numbers, but the seven-five-seven, zero-zero-eight, the cost of sales and food, food and beverages, um, it's like doubled, so, again, hope is a good thing, but.
Well, if you, the cost of sales, you have to look at the revenue to see if that increased, cause that's literally to purchase items and to sell it.
Right, that, that number actually won't go in until the end of the year when all the inventory is actually accounted for.
Okay.
Um, which will happen tomorrow, but.
I just have a general statement.
So, we'll know that number for tw, the December meeting?
That should be part of, that should be part of November, correct?
Yes.
Cause I'm going to do that tomorrow, I'll send you that, so.
And Karen has, yeah, I just, just a general thing, and I don't know if the rest of the board feels this way, but I, I think it would be great if you and Giovanna could get together
and just really fine-tune these numbers now that you got real stuff in and bring us a budget that's much more realistic. Because what I'm really concerned about is that when you have the revenues, the revenues should be projected be lower than what you actually think in my book. Because then that makes you have the expenditures less. Worst-case scenario is that you ended up spending too much for your employees or too, you know, and then you end up at the end of the year. So, and I know you didn't have those numbers and stuff, you know, and I know it's hard because we just had the same conversation with the court. Because you're, and I think for you, it's even harder to do because yours all is based on the weather and the rain and you didn't really, and it's your very first year, Kurt. And I think just on a side note, you've done a great job. I hear great things from people all across the community and stuff. So I think we're just, we're not gonna go anywhere but up with you. And so I'm, I'm real pleased about that. But I just think, and because it's your first year doing a budget with us, you know, and yeah, so I think that if you and Giovanna could just sit down and really look at, because now you know exactly how many rounds of everything that you did and don't make the numbers any higher than what you did this year and make your expenditures match on that, then I think that you'll be good. That's just my suggestion. I'm not the boss here, you know, and so, but I just think that that would, I think that would help.
No, thank you very much.
On how important members feel about that, but yeah.
Joe, maybe this would be a good place to use one department to do zero-based and test it. As I said for fourteen.
She shakes her head, no.
I was just, just if I could announce, I know there's people in the room that wanted to speak. On this. Ahead of time, I don't know. This is a good time for them since it's a work session. I know there's one resident that wanted to speak.
Is it for the meeting budget or is for what's on the agenda?
For this item.
Budget?
For this budget, for this, yeah, budget.
Okay. Is there anyone that would like to speak on that? Wait. Maybe five minutes? Because the meeting starts at seven. I need to get to the bathroom.
I just have a question regarding the golf cart storage for last year. It was two hundred and fifty dollars. If there was eight carts, two thousand dollars should have been brought in. Who didn't pay for a cart?
Two thousand was brought in.
Doesn't show that here. It shows seventeen fifty.
There's a two fifty in the.
October thirty-first?
It wasn't for the end of the year.
But this is supposed to be paid before July or whatever the last date is if you split it in half.
I had, I had one that was paid in full in August.
Okay, so it's just not reflected?
Oh, last year.
No, August of this year.
Oh, this year.
So if I decide next year, I don't want to pay mine in full till August, I can do that?
It's only good up until the end of the year, correct? So, I mean, if, if you want to, I don't see what the difference would be. It'd be two fifty on the year, correct? I didn't prorate it. It was a regular two hundred and fifty dollar fee for the year.
So in August, they paid the entire amount for?
Correct.
August, September, October, November, December.
Okay, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but to address the letter that Kurt has presented to the board for the increase of membership at Green Oaks?
Yeah, that would be better at the board meeting.
Okay.
Because we'll discuss it completely.
Okay, I just want to make sure we have a chance to put our input in before you make a decision.
Oh, yeah, it's, when it's on the agenda, everyone, you can do it at public comments and you can speak on every agenda item.
Okay, thank you very much.
We're going to adjourn so we can take a quick break before the seven o'clock board meeting starts. I'm sorry.
That's okay. The rest, the rest of the information is just for your inform, you know, just.
We're gonna redo it all anyways.
It's history.
Right, we adjourned at, what is, time is it, guys? Officially, we adjourned the work session at six forty-five. Oh, on the, yeah, yeah. No, on the.